Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm going to declare a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the city zoning code to include creating a definition for condominium and usable open space and to make changes to multifamily dwelling regulation and creating condo plans. Is anyone here to speak on the creating the definition of a condo? Your clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma, Marie Fenske, Christine Schmitz, Bryce Remy, Forrest Fromme, Lisa Sullivan.
Public hearing closed. Item five, acting on ordinance 2024-18, which is an ordinance supplementing ordinances of the city of Horicon to include definitions of the term condominium and also the phrase usable open space of the municipal code of the city of Horicon. Lisa?
A second.
Any discussion on ordinance 2024-18? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
All right, next on the agenda is acting on ordinance 2024-19. An ordinance repealing and recreating section 600-19R-D residential district of the municipal code of the city of Horicon. Lisa?
Aye, so moved.
Second. Any discussion on the repeal and recreation? All right, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
All right, for most of the people here, this is where we be swearing in our new police chief, Aaron Birkin, with the excitement of Joe Amson, our former chief. Come on up. Ready? Probably in front of the houls, please.
Do you want to say a few words before you are ceremonial sworn in?
I would love to.
Perfect, or do you want to say them before or after?
I could say them after.
Okay, okay. Would you like me to come around or where would you, where would be your question?
I've got my badge pen right there.
You want to do it after, have her been it on after I swear?
Yeah.
Have you?
Yeah.
When I raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aaron Birkin.
I, Aaron Birkin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
The chief of police.
The chief of police.
To the city of Horicon.
To the city of Horicon.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance to.
And in accordance to.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
I have never seen a prouder, tighter committee than this one. I've been riding around with Dan for a little over a week now, and I couldn't be more excited to get started. I've met just about everybody so far, and everybody's been great. So I'm really, really excited to hit the ground running. I've got great resources. Chief Furseth has really, really pointed me in the right direction. And I've got former chief Adamson back there if I got any questions. So and all the officers that I've met so far are top notch. So you've got a, you've got a good department here. And I hope to run with it.
Next on the agenda, we're going to be acting on the council minutes of August 27th and September 17th. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
All right, next we have public appearances, limited to three minute timeframe per individual. First we have Rich Apple.
Good evening, I'm Rich Apple, superintendent of schools at Horicon. My home address, 717 Nigel Street in Horicon. I'm a resident here. Just to take a few moments to highlight my support for renewing our agreement between the city and school district with the SRO program. In 2020, an agreement was developed for shared a 70, 30% support of the SRO program between the city of Horicon and the school district of Horicon, starting in January of 2021. The MOU was developed between Chief Adamson, who's here tonight, and myself, as we very much felt that it would be a benefit to have this program in our district, and we have not been wrong. It has been a fantastic program, and we want to continue. Since that time, I've collected MOUs from Oakfield, Wapon, Lamyra, Brandon, Rosendale, Beaver Dam, Dodglands Draft MOU, because they're just getting it started, and O'Callaghan Falls. Where the percentage of a responsibility may be different than ours, which is 70, 30, from each of the MOUs, time flexibility are all different from ours. And the cost share are all different than ours. So in this draft MOU before me tonight, the revisions were proposed and agreed upon by interim police chief Furseth and the mayor Josh Moss when we sat down and worked through this to reflect the changes in Kelly days, which is hours for work at other school events that we've worked out, and reimbursement for capital costs to the city from the school district that I believe should be changed for our next MOU there in the draft, as you can see in red highlight. I'm asking for your support of the new MOU and look forward to continued years of shared service between us for this very, very successful program. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Next we have Eugene Rossing.
Well, am I getting better at the public appearance? Yeah, a lot of people, unless I'm in trouble, I'm not sure. I mean, Bryce, I always go over three minutes, don't I? All right, well first, I want to thank Mary Doughty and Jerry Horry for getting me involved in the senior day at the Jersey Street Building. And thank you for the city council for waiving the fees. Next year, I plan on doing a once a month free bike inspection and minor adjustments as part of the senior day. Onto the bike program. These years, repairs were for broken shifters and bent hanger brackets, one flat tire. Two bikes that went missing in June came back in mid-August. Citizens from the community helped in returning the bikes to the racks. A young teenager, Sawyer, took it upon himself to inspect and do light mechanical work, including tires and minor brake adjustments. He has been assisting me in other repairs. There is 16 bikes at the parks right now, and I have four bikes in storage. I also have several bikes that were given to me for the program. I look forward to running the program next year. Last, I want to talk about the Gold Star Trail. I attended the public meeting two weeks ago. The next phase of the trail, which will run from Horicon to Highway 26, where it will connect with the Wild Goose Trail. It will be in the right of way on the north side of the road. Horicon has a great opportunity for being a starting point, but it lacks the necessary facilities. No bathrooms, water, and a mechanic station along the road. Along the proposed trail out at Marshland Crossing, as you turn onto Rookie Street, there is a small hill with several trees and shrubbery. This would be an excellent location for a shelter with tables and benches. Please consider it. Last, I want to say I do support the SRO officer and wish that it will continue also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all I had, so moving on. Personnel and finance committee report. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Sorry. So I think as a parent of a behavioral child who, let's say, passed, because he's been related to this last year, and I used to work at this school, I just wanted to say that having him there has been fantastic. Every morning I would see high fives and gracing captain when I was doing cross yard. And as a mother who have that behavioral child, he would sometimes go in and intervene and say, please, my own child from the room, and I just think the story that you have heard in the past, like little kids are like, they don't get that chance to build those positive relationships with fathers. And I have seen it firsthand that it has made such an impact on their lives. And it, it helps, I think, in their future, knowing that you don't maybe always have that officer coming through that house for positive things, but knowing that he's there building positive relationships in the long run, which is really does help. I mean, it's helped with my child. I've seen it help with other students in our community. And I just wanted to say, I think he should possibly be part of that continuum.
Can I just get your, can I just get your name and address for the paper?
Sure, Sandra Ginsburg, 130 South Bonner Street.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for letting me talk.
All right, moving on. Any else? All right. We have the personnel and finance committee report. Forrest?
Personal and finance committee met regular sessions, September 16th to 16th, here at City Hall. All members present, public appearances. We had a motion to approve our August minutes carried. Another motion to approve our board commissioners of public land, state trust fund home program application passed. We had discussion regarding MOU between the school district in Horicon and the city of Horicon in support of the SRO program. We had a motion to approve our August bills passed, and we set our next meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 6:00 p.m. here in City Hall. We adjourned at 6:30, 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Next, we have public works and development committee. Jim?
Public Works Development Committee meeting was called to order at 6:00 p.m. by old person Fenske. Members present, Fenske and Schmitz, Banzma, Absen, Drew and Evansville. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske, to approve August 1st, 2024 minutes. All voting aye, motion carried. Public appearance done. Cody Vanderheide, the director of public works utilities, provided a monthly update on the DPW and water wastewater departments. Presentation by MSA on the East Walnut, North Cedar Street reconstruction project and final engineering design services. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske, to approve the amendment for the final engineering design services for East Walnut and North Cedar Street reconstruction project. All voting aye, motion carried. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske, to approve section 481-10B to add the words "or their designate." All voting aye, motion carried. Motion by Fenske, second by Schmitz, to approve replacing ordinance sections 525-26 paragraph E with the following definition. Definition of a snow event. A snow event is the accumulation of snow, such that the director of public works utilities or their designate and their sole discretion authorizes the use of snowballs to remove snow. Declaration of snow emergency would move to section 525-26 paragraph F, and removal violating vehicles would move to section 525-26 paragraph G. All voting aye, motion carried. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske, to approve section 525-26 paragraph D to read as follows. Winter parking restrictions. No person shall park, stop, or leave standing any vehicle upon the streets or any portion of the streets during the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. from December 1st through March 31st. All voting aye, motion carried. Set the next meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the DPW conference room. Motion by Fenske, second by Schmitz, to adjourn. All voting aye, the meeting adjourned at 6:30, 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, public safety. Marie?
Our ninth at six o'clock. President Fenske and Remy, absent was Fromme. We approved the minutes, no appearances, discussed using a de-sir for a few crosswalks during trick or treat hours. Discussion on angle parking. Chief Furseth had provided a monthly update on the police department. We discussed the tabletop exercise, and the next meeting is set for Tuesday, October 8th at six o'clock at Public Safety Building. Motion to adjourn, passed.
Thank you. Next we have park and rec. Bryce?
Park and rec was close, or told to order at 6:00 p.m. by Chairperson Remy. Members present were Remy, Sullivan, Crowe, Mookie, employee. There was no one absent. There was a motion to approve last month's minutes. There was public appearance of Eugene Rossing and a non-residence. Cody gave a parks update. Remy shared a rec update on Carson's behalf. Aquatics Center reports, Drew announced his resignation, and we wish to move on his future endeavors. Remy gave an update on friends of Horicon Parks fundraising efforts. There was a motion to approve the donation request for batting cages at the Sher Park. That passed. Discussion on AED for Quonis Park, no action was taken. Same thing for the 1999 Jersey Street Building. We had a motion to approve the park facility rental fee, a cigarette of the Sher Park council. That carried with void being a bone navel. Set next meeting date for Monday, October 21st at 6:00 p.m. at the City Conference Room, and we adjourned at 6:30, 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Next we have plan commission. Lisa?
I have them if you want to read them.
I'll just read them quick. I'll read them quick, it's fine. Did you want to do it, or you want me to do it quick?
I can do it.
All right.
Okay, we have a regular session. The meeting was called to order at six o'clock. Members present, Osmo, Beademan, Westmore, Sullivan, Mary, Magnusson, and Vanderheide. Absen, we're down with back Vanderheide, each Vanderheide. Motion was by Sullivan, second by Westmore, to approve amendments from August 12th. All in favor, we're in the public opinion, motion carried. There weren't no public appearances. There was a motion by Magnusson, second by Westmore, to recommend to the council the certified survey map for both school systems located on Logan Street and Marshall Cross. All were in favor and the motion carried. Was a motion to adjourn, and we adjourned at 6:13.
Thank you. All right, next is my report. I just, just two things. Last night, I see a lot of the same faces as last night. Last night was the grand opening and ribbon cutting out at Marine Park Technical College, the Horicon Regional Center. It looks amazing. I would recommend anybody go out and take a peek. As I said, I see a lot of the same faces, so you've all seen it. Hopefully, anyone that's watching right now has a chance to really go out there. One of the things that I caught, I'm sure everyone else did too, was that these buildings, since they're school buildings, are also available for, you know, residents or people in the Marine Park Technical College District to rent rooms, rent classrooms, rent the bay. I mean, it's, it's a community building, more or less. So please, you know, check out their website, see what's available. I know right now they're just setting it up. But the, the building and the fire apparatus on which people are going to be trained is pretty amazing. And then, uh, the second part, I just want to take some time to thank Dan Furseth while he's looking down at his phone and ignoring me. Thank you for coming in in February and helping our guys and helping track with our police department. It really means a lot. I know the DPW guys and everyone else, they're going to miss you a ton. I can't say anything other than just straight thank you. I mean, to come in here and last even longer than what was expected. You were retired. You can't wait to get back to retiring, and so thank you, thank you for giving Horicon just a little bit of your time. I appreciate it, Dan. Thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to be acting on ordinance 2024-20, which is an ordinance repealing and recreating section 481-10B. Snow and ice removal, removal of snow from sidewalks of the municipal code of the city of Horicon. Jim? Any discussion on the ordinance? In your packet? Please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Flipping the page, number 17. Acting on ordinance 2024-21, which is an ordinance repealing and recreating sections 525-26E and F and creating section G, all relating to winter parking of the municipal code of the city of Horicon. Jim?
Make motion to pass ordinance 24-21.
Any discussion on this ordinance? All right, now, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Number 18, we're going to be acting on ordinance 2024-22. Repealing and recreating section 252-26D winter parking restrictions. Jim?
I'll move to accept ordinance 2024-22.
A second. Any discussion on the winter parking restrictions? All right, now, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Number 19 is acting on resolution 24-15.
I just have something to say, but say it after you're done.
Go ahead.
This resolution is for us to obtain a loan through the Board of Commissioners of Public Land for $1.5 million to reimburse general fund for infrastructure expenses incurred in TID 5. I did just receive an email from the Board of Commissioners of Public Land this evening at 5:31. Excuse me, that does state that their interest rate is dropped from 5.5%, which is what our application is locked in at, to 5.25%. So in order for us to get the 5.25%, we would have to not act on this, and then I'd have to cancel the current application and start the process over again. I don't know if you want to do that or pursue on our current route. Again, the difference is a quarter percent interest. I think over the course of the tenure of loan, you're probably looking at maybe $5,000 worth of interest. This is an entirely TID eligible expense, so this, all of these loan payments will come from increment that is incurred from TID 5. So I'm just putting that out there.
Any additional cost to the administration of that application?
Other than my wages and time. Because essentially, obviously, if I just hadn't checked my email, we would have proceeded with this.
When is it due?
I don't, so we're just reimbursing, so we're not in a time crunch for, for this loan. Obviously, we've been floating, you know, general funds been floating TID, TID 5 for, for a time now, so time isn't of the essence, so like this, if municipalities were, were needing the funds prior to incurring the expense issue, so it's really up to you guys. It's, it's not a, it's not a tedious process for this, but obviously, everything you just did this last month, you're gonna be doing again next month, which the only bad thing is, is ultimately October's a busy month, and we'll already be seeing and spending lots of time with each other with a being budget month. So completely up to you guys what you would like to do, whether you want to go ahead and act on the 5.5% tonight or not act on it tonight, and then I would go ahead, cancel this application, and then submit a new one and lock us in at the 5.25%.
I, I think we just go ahead and reset to the 5.25%. I agree with that.
Would there be any detriment to waiting for November, if there's not a time crunch and you have a lot with October?
Um, I haven't even go ahead and do it, just because this time of the year starts to get fun and crazy anyway, so.
So table 19.
I would, don't table it, just, we'll just talk about it and no action.
No action. All right. Moving on, I invited Warner Beademan to give a, report to council from our tabletop we had last month. If you, it's all yours, Warner.
Okay, August 24th, I have the third tabletop exercise, which we were the super responders and associated agencies of the city of Horicon. The topic was a regional jetliner that suffered engine failure and landed. A lot of folks might think that's a little far fetched, but we all know that Stoltenberg ended a large jetliner in Hudson, New York. But also interestingly was that a few weeks after this exercise, a regional aircraft did, did happen to ditch a lot of people. But there were 30, excuse me, there were 50, what people crewed that, because it was an airliner, and it landed in the Rock River, down by the river, and unfortunately, it was a disaster. So we were the responders for giving that scenario. And as fire, EMS, law enforcement, and a few others who all, you know, described what they would, how they would respond, I would then throw up objections, saying, okay, this is what's happening. We've got a patient that swam across the river and tried to get away from the air, but he was afraid he was going to drown. And his body got, I don't know, pissed, soaked with the injectors. The end result of this was, the discussion really took off. The previous ones have always scheduled one hour for the exercise and a half hour for the treatment. And these, the folks would have kept on going after you, but I didn't, I didn't call them. The very interesting part of it is, it gets the people to think about all different kinds of alternatives that they could have done. And the most rewarding part is, is where I hear that people kept on talking about, hey, we could have done this, or maybe we should have done it this way. And that's really the kind of, of result that really a compliment, it was a big compliment to me because the thinking, the thinking out of the box, and the thinking, how could we have this done? I'm really impressed with the city of Horicon, with its fire, EMS, Department of Public Works Utilities, because I get definitely bothered to get into a number of these exercises. And then we even get Krista to include certain important things that we have to remember. One of them, you talked about was falling out of the fireplace, totally for the people who were searching for water. And she said, yeah, you can use a credit card, but remember, $3,500 in it. So, you know, that's, so, you know, that's everyone's trying to, yeah, I, I didn't know that, I was definitely there. So overall, I think the city was really fortunate that we had, you know, the, the, the citizens. They have really taken to these tabletops, I understand, and reported to them. The very first one we did, heard the training. we did, heard the training I got, bring the agency heads, get, you ask them what kind of a topic you want, what kind of exercises on. And so they agreed on work, but then afterwards, in the brief, they said, we don't want to know what the topic, you know, the exercise is going to be, just pick something and do it. And that was very pleasing to hear, that they're not afraid not to know until they want to get involved. And their rationale is, we don't go for what they did in exercise, we're going to do based on. That's very true. But it doesn't stipulate their responses and their creativity and all of the situations.
Thank you. And thank you to you too. I mean, these were, these were great. And I know most of the people here were involved and a lot of people behind you were involved. Very helpful. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're going to be acting on amendment number one of the engineering and design service contract for East Walnut and North Cedar. Jim?
Okay. I'd like to approve the amendment number one of the engineering and design services contract for East Walnut and North Cedar's street reconstruction project.
A second. Christine can have a.
Any discussion on amendment one?
Is this an additional thing you see ready?
Yeah.
That will plan set and get us ready to hold the bid.
Any other discussion? Click, please go to the roll.
This is a motion to approve amendment number one to the East Walnut and North Cedar Street Reconstruction Project Design Services Contract in the amount of $32,870 from MSA Professional Services, Inc. Jim Bansma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we're acting on a certified survey map, creating the two acre parcel in Marshland Crossing located east of Rookie Street. Lisa? Any discussion on the CSM? In your packet.
Is that, uh, number two more?
Right, click, please go to the roll.
Uh, this is a motion to approve the certified survey map, creating approximately a two acre parcel located in Marshland Crossing. Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Bansma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Next, we're going to be acting on an acceptance of the donation of batting cages for Dishar Park. Bryce?
I will make a motion to accept the donation of batting cages for Dishar Park from Ben Stripe on the condition they find someone to install the, um, telephone poles.
Any discussion? Hey, Matt, please go to the roll.
Sorry. Just jotting it all down. Jim, you seconded that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. This is a motion to accept the donation of a batting cage for placement in Dishar Park from Ben Stripe on condition the telephone poles are installed by another entity.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan?
Aye.
Jim Bansma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is acting on the resident, non-resident facility rental fees at Dishar. Bryce?
Can I just reference this image or do I have to say everything in there?
Um, I would probably just reference the, uh, what you're changing, because it looks, yes, just reference what you're changing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the resident and non-resident facility rental fees at Dishar Park as listed in the Horicon Park and Recreation Board Amendment 617.
With an effective date of?
With an effective date of tomorrow.
Or any rentals incurred after.
Yes, thank you.
And just removing the dance off, right, based on what I saw from the minutes?
Yeah.
And slightly changing the, um, all above buildings rental fee, yep, to reflect the reduction of one building.
Be looking for a second.
Oh, I thought Fromme did.
You did? Oh, good. And I know, please go on.
I won't read that all either.
Okay. All right.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan?
Aye.
Jim Bansma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Next, we're acting on a facade and building improvement grant project completion request form from Troy Kirkoff at 305 Mill.
In your packet is a copy of a project completion and fund request form as completed by Troy Kirkoff for 305 Mill Street. Um, as you may or may not recall, the city council had approved, uh, two facades and a building improvement, uh, grant application from him was presented, um, approved at, uh, 423. Um, and this is a listing of, uh, essentially his budgeted costs and then, uh, column worth of his actual costs. Uh, he would be looking to receive a total amount of $20,527.11. That's $10,000 for the two facade grants and $10,527.11 for the building improvement grant. Each facade grant does have a maximum of $5,000.
I make a motion.
A second. Forgot to play for it.
Any discussion?
I think you've done a beautiful job of, uh, fixing that building up and, uh, area around the building. You can, uh, really be fortunate that we took an empty business and, uh, made it a, a nice situation down there and a nice business to reach out to people in the area and beyond our area.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Money will spend.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All right, Matt, please call the roll.
All right, this is a motion to approve the facade and building improvement grant project completion and funds request form from Troy Kirkoff for 305 Mill Street in the amount of $20,527.11, $10,000 for two facade grants and $10,527.11 for a building improvement grant. Jim Bansma?
Aye.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Bryce Remy?
Aye.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan?
Aye.
All right, number 26, acting on the MOA between the school district of Horicon and the city of Horicon in support of a school resource officer program. Forrest?
All right, so from your view, is the MOU for the, or MOA, sorry, the school district in the city of Horicon for that SRO program, um, some change there being highlighted in here, um, Kelly Days is one of the big ones for SRO whenever they're working events or doing additional time outside, you know, two hours, they would earn hours towards their Kelly Days. Um, Kelly Days, you know, it's kind of like a top time thing where they could sit there, take it off as additional time off later on at other times. What is brought to the personal finances, some concerns brought up, um, one was being the school paying for it versus the city paying for overtime. Um, I did ask for, um, an estimate that we're expecting for the year. Mr. Apple was able to provide it, and he was said about 25 to 30 hours a year for, for the school year that we'd be looking at in current. Um, the other concern was the city paying for it versus school this, the school district gets money from other communities. Um, to be honest, my understanding is that the school district funds, 80% of those funds are still coming from the city of Horicon taxpayers. So you're looking at minimal, in my opinion, you're looking at minimal impact of the city of Horicon residents paying more for the SRO versus, say, someone in the area, one the other, and these things, the school district. Um, I know it comes the numbers thing as far as where it's coming from, but I, I didn't feel that that was that big impacting the value. You've heard Mr. Apple mention earlier, some of the other residents here, the value of the program to the community, I would be very surprised if you find someone that didn't want to pay any 50 cents or a dollar taxes to be able to keep that SRO forward versus if anyone is being paid from another community or the school district cash, um, SRO. The other one was the equipment fund with the 70/30 split. Um, it was also brought to my attention that we always change the equipment percentages as far as our responsibility versus, um, what they pay for operational costs as far as salary, what these other people invoice for. And the equipment charges, some of the concerns that have been brought up, the police officer having the equipment that isn't necessary for an SRO. It is a police officer position, you still go through those items. Um, the purpose of an SRO is something that would forbid, it really happened at the school, and then shooting or some other act, I don't think you want to swallow who paid for his body or, um, in my opinion. But since I believe most of the equipment is probably more used at a city side then than the SRO duties, I would be willing to propose that to be more of a 50/50 on the equipment versus, um, for the school to pay 70% of the 70. Um, those were the main points I had gotten out of it from the personal finance. Um, I asked Kristin to put some other data together as far as some of the numbers as far as what we invoice. It looks like we should all have a copy of that. Kristin, if you want to take them in to discuss, would you have a comment? This one's in there.
All I did was put together, there's a two-page document under that, ultimately, just kind of going over, because I know a lot of you weren't necessarily around when we created the SRO position and the SRO corresponding SRO fund. SRO, refer to it, that's what I will call this, school resource officer. SRO position was created in the 2021 budget, which Rich had talked about. SRO position is considered an additional officer. It is com- funded completely separately in a special revenue fund, which is Fund 250. That position, if we, if it was not an SRO officer, we would be down one officer. So again, all the equipment that is purchased for that particular person, we would not purchase if not for the SRO. So that's also included in here. If the SRO officer did not exist, there would be one less officer in the city. The SRO is funded by the city, the Horicon School District and the city of Horicon. School pays 70% of the costs, the city pays 30% subject to restrictions. School pays for all overtime incurred by SRO for school functions during the duration of this contract, um, which during the duration of this contract, I have actually built the school for less than 10 hours total during this whole contract. Um, and below is the breakdown of the invoices that were sent to the school district for the last, uh, three years, which was 21, 22, and 23. Um, this email had, this information had been distributed earlier, um, a few months ago, I believe, Rich Apple had seen these costs as well as the mayor. Um, I'm not sure Forrest was involved in that email chain as well.
Yeah, I think he had some of that.
And it just kind of talks about how operational expenses are, are broke out by wages, benefits, training, and operational expenses. Operational expenses are, are the most fluid as they can contain your outlay items, um, which are health insurance related cost, squad items. Um, so some of the bigger ticket items that you would have seen like in 2023, uh, big, uh, one of the big ones was the tough book in 2023. In 2022, you had a Glock and a portable radio. In 2021, um, there was a, a body cam. Um, you know, so that's just kind of a little bit of the history, you know, the breakdown of some of the charges. And, you know, the last page of it are just, um, items of note that I thought that you guys should, if you weren't previously thinking about when you reviewed the document, that you, as elected officials for the city of Horicon, should be considering.
So, for me, based on what's, should be right, it's just kind of faded out on our campus, like, but, um, overtime special event, that I would be looking at mainly the same or to accept those changes, because I don't feel that the cost of the city is that great. Um, the equipment, uh, versus trying to determine what is PO duty equipment versus SRO duty equipment and trying to figure out what that split is, I would probably just give it a 50/50, depending on the equipment charges versus the 70/30.
Tracking the Kelly hours, is that something to revisit?
Who's going to track that? Um, it's also not, it's not in the current union contract, so you're going to have to address that. That'll be additional costs to have an MOU.
Should we, should we ask Officer Starks to talk about, because I think he's the union president?
I'm not, I'm just.
I thought he had discussed this already with the union.
Oh, I'm not saying it can't, I'm just saying that that's another step. Like, I wouldn't, I definitely, you can't enter into a contract when currently that's not language in the contract.
Well, I've seen the union representatives, what's the impact of Kelly Days due to the union contract as far as what we have to do.
So, I'm the union president as well, so I can speak on, on a lot of the behalf, so that anything that goes into this MOU is in lieu of our contract. So this would be a signed agreement, which is already, I've already pushed it through our union, all of our, all of our guys have met on it, so it wouldn't have, this is, so then when we renegotiate in, at the end of 2025, then this will just go into the contract. That's what the, the MOU is going.
Okay. So if we were to change, based on what was presented to us, if we were to change the equipment from the specific piece of equipment, to just doing a 50/50, does that go back to the union?
Yes. Any changes would have to go back to the union, but if you make a change there, it's also got to go back to the school as well.
Right.
So some of that time as well, so you said that you build 10 hours of overtime since the position has been created, because I flex my time. So if I stay for a dance or come to a game or something else, there's four hours where there's no coverage at the school. I'm gone from the school, which the students, I'm not there, and then that's what they tap. And throughout, we've been on that as well. That's when I've had numerous fights, I've had upset parents that come up to the school, numerous things. So that's where, instead of having to flex my time, where I'm, I take off on a Wednesday at noon to make up for that four hours, that's where the difference is. So there hasn't been any overtime.
Are there any other departments, uh, that use Kelly Days?
Yes.
That's what you're?
Yes. And, and Beaver Dam is one of the bigger ones that uses it. Beaver Dam is completely funded, well, I got some information earlier today that Beaver Dam is not completely funded by the police department, but, um, if there is an MOU, then they do utilize the Kelly Days. So then, then the school doesn't like coverage, and I can only use that time when other kids are not in school.
So we would still have to come up with a way to track and record keep the use of Officer Starks' Kelly Days.
So I would imagine that would fall between superintendent and chief.
No, that'll be in our office. That'll be my office.
On our time card, we'd be adding to our time card.
It'll be another, it'll be another leave time that we'll have to create and track.
I almost.
And I assume that that will not be subject to the annual payout of comp time?
No.
That's in the current contract, and that will be specifically stated in the current contract, but that bank is not subject to that?
Yes. What are you going to say, Rich?
I almost feel like it would have been beneficial to have Kristin in all these convos, just I feel like, not that Kristin controls everything, but she is the money lady, and she has a good idea of what's going on. Uh, I feel like it just gets to hear them, we're arguing about it, and it's kind of just a waste of our time when we're like, oh, we have to run it through committees again.
Well, I'm trying to, I don't want to keep hassles, you know, I was going to pull special personal finance, didn't get everyone's availability until it was Monday, I finally got it. And, but then, if, the, the other thing that Kristen had touched on, took I finally got it and by then if, the other thing that Kristen had touched on without it, without the MOA, we lose not, we lose an increment at high count in the first part. That doesn't mean just the SRO, that also means during the months of the summer, we don't have appeal to help with the shift coverage. Probably most of the staff is going to take vacations. We're losing that complete increment on that one. The SRO position is also able to be pulled for any city emergency that would pop up that we would need additional staff or we would lose that additional security, like their backup as well and losing this. I bring that up because as it was mentioned earlier, we're about to go on the budget. If we can't budget this for twenty twenty-five, we don't have an SRO position and the school district will have to figure that out. It also means losing a head count as far as, as of January one in twenty twenty-five, that we are not going to be able to sit there and claim one or two something.
You also are going to have to keep in mind that this will have impact as well as, you know, changing some of these terms in this contract is going to have a budgetary impact on you because the city of Horicon is subject to levy limit requirements. So for your, you were able to raise your levy nineteen thousand dollars over your total expenses for the city of Horicon. Total.
Yeah.
That's not even covering the increase in health insurance for your employees. So now here again, you're, you're taking on additional costs.
What, how much, what is the total cost you're taking on in addition?
Well, you're absorbing any of this, the overtime.
So if we're, so additional twenty hours, because we've already paid ten hours.
That's over the life of the contract. That wasn't a year.
Oh, okay. So if this thirty hours, we can't be talking more than a gram in wages.
I'm, I'm just.
Right.
I'm pointing it out to you. Is that fiscally responsible for your residents? Not for the school district. Again, I'm not arguing for the school district. I think the program's great. I don't, I don't understand where anybody thinks the program's not great. But if the overtime is being incurred for the school, why is, are the residents of the city of Horicon paying for it?
They're paying for it whether they're paying for the school tax or the city tax.
They're paying for it both ways. Burnett's not.
School tax, school tax is the district, not the city. Said already.
When I pay my taxes, I pay to the school and I pay for the city.
Correct. But when Burnett pays it, they're paying the school tax.
Right.
So as a resident in the city of Horicon, you're paying as a resident and as a school district.
Correct. So I can't imagine, this is, this is the problem I have with it is that we're talking, I'm just going to call it a thousand dollars in Kelly days, whatever it's going to be the city to fund. If the school district entities that pay, imagining eight percent of that is coming from the city of Horicon residents to the school district.
Already through the school district tax.
Correct. So whether the city is, city resident is paying the school district tax or the city tax, I don't understand how this, how a city of Horicon residents is paying more.
Because they're paying the city tax as well. I don't know how I can clarify that for you, so Forrest.
Okay, so a thousand dollars, how much is that?
I, you know what, Forrest, I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to spend my time debating this. You have your mind made up and you are an elected official, you guys get to make the decisions. I'm just giving you information. You do what you want with the information and you guys are the ones that are elected to make fiscal decisions for the taxpayers of the city of Horicon.
So then.
Remind a lot of So the reason that I brought up the whole Capitol, why we're paying for five thousand dollars worth of a, a police car that sits up there, why we're paying for his police uniform, why we're paying for his body, all of those additional costs, because it came up when I was speaking to my other area schools superintendents, when I asked to see their MOUs or their agreements on the SRO program and none of them have any of the costs incurred that we do here at Horicon. That made me go, why do we have that? I questioned this this last spring when there was a bill on there for us to update and pay for a computer, pay for some software that came through. And I questioned that, we ended up having to pay it, but I felt that that was not an expense that, because we do provide a computer, he needs one specifically for the police department. So when that came up, we ended up having to pay it, but that also brought us to this point where we said, I'm going to check in more and that's why I made those recommendations. Spoke with Chief Persteth, who had been an SRO before, who's been involved in this for quite some time, also agreed as we went through those changes and the mayor was involved in that meeting. So when I had all of these other, I have them right here, if you'd like to see them, I'll give them to you for the other area school districts and their agreement with their community. But I don't know why Horicon would be different than those others. There's a lot of value added that goes into, and that's what they all had said too, the value added that goes into this position from an SRO police perspective and the connections that they make with kids that carries over into our community. And it goes into not just Horicon, but other Iron Ridge, Burnett, other areas, because those kids all come to Grayson, speak to him about issues, concerns that they had and then they get it. So I, that's why we made those changes.
I also just want to, I got a bunch of letters, so I wanted to pass them around, but those are all from people that work at the school and some of them are residents as well, just in support of the SRO program.
I know. But I think some things taken out of context here. I don't think any, any of this group is against the program. I think the group is going to prove it a hundred percent. And I, I want to take that part of our discussion, it's just who's going to pay, pay for it? That's, that's something. We have the seventy thirty that, that we've agreed on. However, if you look at the other things, is that a police car? Okay, let's go back to the inception of the program. Is that?